I'd like to open up the Ballin Park City Council's, um, excuse me, City Council meeting. Today is October the first, two thousand and fourteen. The time is seven oh five. So I'm gonna have at this point Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco lead us in an invocation, followed by the flag salute. So I will ask all those that are able to do so to, uh, at this time. Thank you. Good evening.
Uh, Mayor, thank you. If I could, all of you can please, uh, rise and we'll say our prayer part of the meeting. Now Heavenly Father, thank you for all the opportunities you've given us here in our community, for keeping us safe, and all the gifts that you have given us. Please bless all those that are in need in our community. Please bless those that are fighting in wars, uh, in different parts of the world, protecting our community, our, uh, our nation, defending all the men and women that are out there fighting for us and in harm's way, for our firefighters, our police officers, and all those in our other community that put their lives in harm's way to watch over them. And a special, um, uh, prayer for those in the city of Bell, uh, I'm sorry, Bell Gardens, for Daniel Crespo and his family, for his, uh, passing away, we pray for peace in their community.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco. At this point, we'll face the flag. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, wanna, first of all, say good evening to everyone. Uh, as Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco stated, our deepest condolences goes out, uh, to, Mr. Daniel Crespo, the mayor of the city of Bell Garden. And we all here on the dais have had an opportunity, uh, at one time to meet with him, a great person, and our condolences goes out, uh, to the family. Uh, we also have a police officer from the city of Covina, who unfortunately, uh, uh, passed, uh, was due to an uncoming vehicle that turned right in front of the police officer. So our deepest condolences goes out, uh, to the city of Covina. I'm not certain, I'm trying to get the name, name of the officer, so we could close on his behalf. Does anyone have his name?
David Reynoso.
David Reynoso, do you have that, Captain? Jordan. Jordan Quarters. Thank you. Yes, thank you, very, very young officer. His dad is a former captain, I believe, uh, in the city of Covina. So our deepest condolences, anything we could do to assist them during the time of their services as well, and I know we'll participate or assist them, uh, mutually, because, uh, that's a great loss for the city of Covina. So we could send a, uh, condolences, a letter, uh, to, uh, the city of Covina's council members. So, uh, we wish, uh, the immediate family our deepest condolences as well. Um, this one, I'd like to also close on behalf of a good friend of mine that passed away, Kuki Hossan, uh, about a week ago, so, and, and council members wishing to close on anyone else. If not, I just wanna also say, I saw the video on the, uh, on the event over there at the street fair. Awesome. Also wanna congratulate everyone that's here, all the staff members, and all those different businesses that participated out there. So, uh, looking forward. Unfortunately, I was unable to make it, 'cause I'm taking a class at Cal State Northridge every Thursday, right through the end of the month. I'm gonna see if I'm able to excuse myself either tomorrow or not the following week, which is the last concert. But, got a lot of, a lot of positive input from a lot of residents, so I just wanna say that. Uh, we need to also assist the businesses, the, the taco shop that's there, because we need to get a lot more people in that particular area. Business is still a little slow. The Baldwin Park Grill, uh, also needs a lot more assistance, and I had an opportunity to speak to George, so he may be retooling the actual restaurant itself. I don't wanna get into the potential changes he has, 'cause that's something that he's been, he's gonna be working on. Again, he wants to be able to survive. So wanna thank all the participants, all the Ballin Park Association businesses that are out there, that have participated as well.
Yes, Mayor, I wanted to just comment on that as well. Thank you so much for your acknowledgement. Um, staff did put a lot of time and effort and energy. They really took the ideas and ran with them. So I wanna thank everyone, Parks and Recs, Police was out there, Public Works, everyone. And, you know, all our employees were there and their families, which was really nice to see. I still, you know, we just received another check in the mail, correct, Manny Correia? So I'm sharing that, because there's not too late to participate and, and sponsor. So please, if you wanna sponsor and help sponsor some of these, the future events, um, talk to Manny Correia on the Parks and Recs. So thank you so much, and everyone's welcome. We have it once again tomorrow and the following Thursday. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor.
I would just, uh, like to just also add that that event was a, a wonderful event. It was very successful. I talked to a lot of our residents that were at the, uh, uh, street fair event. It was, uh, just very well attended, and we had more than fifty-two vendors that participated. So, uh, I know that the American Taco Shop, uh, uh, their store said they had more customers than they've ever had, uh, in a long time. So I know we have, uh, the, two more of these events, and these are great events to have. And, and I think after these couple of events, I think we should, uh, sit down again and talk as a city council to maybe have these events prior to holidays, you know, as they come along. I think they're just, really help out the businesses, and if we do it in different parts of downtown area, I think it really helps out. So, thanks for all those that attended, for staff, did a great job. I know there was also a lot of employees that came that, uh, on their free time, just kinda came and heard the music, heard Soto, the band, and, and all that. So, uh, it was all very well done from our police department, public safety standpoint. Uh, there was no incidents, our, uh, our, uh, our Public Works crews that were out there and Parks and Recreation, everybody did, uh, a great hands-on job. So just by, kudos to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mayor, I'd also like to thank everyone. It was such a, a wonderful event to see, uh, all the families and community, uh, members coming forward. Of course, our staff was unbelievable. Um, but also, so many compliments from, uh, not only the vendors, but the community that came out, the residents that came out with their children. It was truly a very family-oriented night, with a lot of fun, dancing, and everyone had a great, great time. And I, I'm looking forward, and we, I believe we've got more vendors coming tomorrow.
Awesome.
Um, and so this is something that's really growing, and to thank Councilmember Rubio for a wonderful dream that she had, that really, really came to fruition and did very, very well. It's, it's a wonderful, it's wonderful to see the success of that.
Uh, thank you, thank you very much, Councilmember. And also, you forgot to mention, you sung, uh, yesterday.
Oh, she did, she did. No, just really quickly, I wanna make sure we advertise. Manny Correia, can you remind us when the senior prom is? I know it's coming up, maybe two weeks from now. Can you remind me the day?
Yes, the senior prom will be Friday, October tenth. So next Friday, a week from this Friday, at the Courtyard Marriott.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you very much. Uh, at this point, I'm gonna have Madam City Clerk, or City Treasurer, Maria Contreras, will be taking roll call in the absence of Tabana.
Good evening, everyone. Buenos noches a todos. Councilmember Cruz Baca?
Here.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Susan Rubio Hernandez?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Ricardo Pacheco?
Here.
Mayor Manuel Lozano?
Present, thank you very much, appreciate that. All right, at this point, we're going to go into the presentations. We have several, uh, presentations. The first one that we have is the presentation, uh, proclamation to Mr. Todd M. Pomquist, uh, Executive Director of the San Gabriel Valley Consortium on Homeless Recognizing the Week of November sixteenth, two thousand and fourteen, as a Homeless Awareness Week. So what we'll do is, let me just, uh, actually, we're gonna, uh, Monica Garcia, go ahead and read this one. Then we also have the, um, then we'll have the other council members read the other ones. All right, thank you, go ahead.
Mayor, you have to make the announcement of your...
What's that?
No, we don't have that today.
Oh, no, we don't, not today, thank you.
Okay, so, um, this is a Baldwin Park City Council proclamation recognizing Homeless Awareness Week, the week of November sixteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Whereas approximately fifty-one thousand three hundred and forty homeless people were counted to be living in the LA County, thirty-four percent experienced substance abuse, thirty-three suffer from mental illness, twenty-two percent have a physical disability. And whereas approximately three thousand nine hundred and eighteen of the Los Angeles County homeless population lives on the streets or in emergency shelters in the San Gabriel Valley each night, and the number of homeless people in the San Gabriel Valley is on the rise. And whereas being homeless makes it difficult to secure basic needs, including access to stable housing, balanced nutrition, self-care, and adequate and appropriate medical or mental health care. Of the alarming number of homeless people in San Gabriel Valley, twenty-nine percent are chronically homeless, forty-seven percent are substance abusers, and thirty-seven point five are mentally ill. And whereas awareness of the epidemic of homelessness and its causes in San Gabriel Valley must be heightened to ensure greater support for effective programs aimed at preventing homelessness, and to, um, helping homeless individuals and families obtain and maintain permanent housing. And whereas the citizens of San Gabriel Valley are the key to preventing homelessness by volunteering time, donating assistance, and advocating for resources, encouraging productive choices, and creating opportunities for family members and neighbors to maintain housing. And whereas initiating a Homeless Awareness Week in the San Gabriel Valley will provide the opportunity to increase knowledge and understanding of those living without shelter, and to highlight the activities during this week, which will educate residents of the San Gabriel Valley on how to combat and improve this unfortunate problem in our region. And finally, whereas ending homelessness is now critical to upholding the vitality of families and sense of community in the San Gabriel Valley, the San Gabriel Valley Consortium on the Homelessness, established to facilitate partnerships, educating the community and member agencies, and advocating for appropriate housing and services. And for that, we thank you, and we proclaim this week as a Homeless Awareness Week. Uh, now therefore, the mayor, council, and treasurer, as well as the city clerk, um, do hereby proclaim this week as, as such.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Come on up here, we'll get, thank you very much. (applause)
Thank you very much. You wanna share some words?
Thank you. Just, uh, thank the council for its quick and, and positive response to our request for this proclamation, and to the city staff for reaching out to us, and, and I look forward to, uh, the continued growth of the partnership.
Thank you, thank you very much. We'll get a picture right here. There you go.
I want you to be the center and out front, not me, kind of wigged in.
Okay, here we go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, the next one. Okay, the next one is for Niraj Shah, a good friend of ours, a resident of City Ballin Park. I will have a, believe, a council member, um, who did I give, did I give that over to? Okay, so, I was gonna say Ricardo Pacheco, but he's got the other one. Cruz Baca will read it, thank you very much.
Hi, Festival of Diwali, October the twenty-third, two thousand and fourteen. Uh, whereas for millions of Indian-Americans, Diwali is a time for celebration like Christians and New Year combined. Diwali, a festival of great significance to Indian-Americans, is celebrated annually with Hindus, Sikhs, Jans, and some Buddhists praying for health, prosperity, and peace. Diwali, the most popular Hindu holy day, is the festival of lights, which aims at dispelling the darkness and lighting up lives, and symbolizes the victory of good over evil. On this day of forgiveness, festivities and friendliness, families and friends get together for worship, followed by a sumptuous and elaborate feast. Diwali is also considered a harvest festival, and on the last day of the last month, in the lunar year, calendar year, and is the beginning of the new year for many Hindus. And for, and Diwali is a celebration of the return of God following the vanquishing of demonic forces. For Sikhs, Diwali is feasted as the day on which the sixth founding Sikh guru, Guru Hargobind, was released from captivity by the Mughal Emperor Janghagir, or Jans. Diwali marks the anniversary of the attainment of nirvana by Lord Mahavira, the last of the Turkhan Karas, founders of the Jain philosophy. And according to Niraj Shah, resident of Baldwin Park, Diwali is a celebration of Jain, Lord Mahavira's nirvana and the beginning of New Year. We celebrate with various religious rituals, lighting of lamp, diha, diya, sorry, fireworks, traditional Rangoli decoration, and sharing Indian sweets with friends and family. Therefore, the mayor, council members, Mayor Pro Tem, city treasurer, and the city clerk, uh, do recognize the historical and religious significance of Diwali, the festival of lights, and appreciate the diversity in both India and the United States and throughout the world, and acknowledge and support the relationship of collaboration and respect between the United States and India. Congratulations.
Awesome, awesome, thank you. Come on up here, Mr. (applause).
Look at her dress.
You look beautiful.
Yeah, I just wanna do.
Yeah, come on.
Sounds like it's a beautiful celebration.
Hi.
She has some assignment to do.
Okay, alrighty.
I think we need to put her on a chair.
You know what, let's please?
We need to put her on a chair.
Yeah, let's place her on my chair.
Okay, I'm holding her.
I just wanna recognize city councils. When I approached them about Diwali, and they were very receptive, and, uh, recognizing Diwali being, uh, one of the major, uh, festivals in India. So I really appreciate, uh, city leadership, and thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you very much.[1003.81][1003.81](applause) Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you. All right, we have one more by Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco.
Uh, this is a Baldwin Park City Council, uh, proclamation for our National Orthodontic Health Month on October, for this month of October, two thousand and fourteen. Uh, whereas the practice of orthodontics has improved the lives of children and adults in Baldwin Park and nationwide for more than one hundred years, and whereas orthodontics have helped to create the beautiful health, I'm sorry, were you, were, Mayor, uh, was she going to receive this award, or?
Oh, she, you're gonna, you're the recipient, right? Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, I, I didn't even know.
That's okay.
Um, should I go down there and, and, well, okay, we'll, we'll bring it back up.
We'll bring it up here.
Okay, sorry, here. Whereas orthodontics have helped to create the beautiful, uh, healthy smiles of countless citizens of Baldwin Park, and where straight teeth contribute immensely to a person's emotional well-being and oral health, and whereas a smile that is good for life often brightens the day of most anyone an orthodontic patient may meet. And whereas the orthodontists who create these beaming smiles be, uh, by expertly guiding teeth into their proper positions and retaining them, were, uh, them, where they contribute to our community in other important ways from providing employment to sponsoring sports teams and educational programs. And so we now therefore, Manuel Lozano, Mayor of the city of Baldwin Park, with Mayor Pro Tem Ricardo Pacheco, council members Cruz Baca, Monica Garcia, Susan Rubio, city treasurer, Maria Contreras, and city clerk, Alejandra Avila, proclaim that October shall be observed as National Orthodontic Health Month throughout the city of Baldwin Park. Congratulations.
Thank you.[1123.08][1123.08](applause) Would you, uh, like to share a few words, and then come up here for our pictures, or? That's great. That's a good cause, all right. Thank you, come on up here.
Congratulations, congratulations.
She brought us toothbrushes.
I could do a bit of candy right here right now.
Hey, was that you, Ellen?
Yes.
Who's this camera right here? All right, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much again for your time, and I brought you a leaf.
Oh, okay, we'll share this with everyone here.
She also brought some gifts.
Sure.
It also reminds me of our general appointment.
Oh, that's nice.
So when you smell it?
Hey, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll see you at the next meeting.
Appreciate that. All right, thank you, and thank you very much for being here as well, and what you're doing in the community as well. That's much appreciated. All right, at this point, we're going to go ahead and in public communication, so anyone wishing to speak, please state your name, you have approximately three minutes. Thank you, good evening.
Counsel, my name is James Heinley. I just served a mayor on, uh, legal papers on a lawsuit in his personal capacity, out in the hallway. He manually dropped it on the ground. I have it on video, so he was served properly. But the issue is, your city attorney just advised me that he'll be handling this, uh, defense on this, and I'm, I'm thinking, he's being sued in his personal capacity. City attorney has no, no authority or business defending him in his own personal, uh, capacity. I'll let you guys know that, if you wanna keep eye on that, 'cause I know I'm gonna keep eye on that. Second, um, I wanna talk to you about the public records. Now, the public records, but the state of California requires you, as, as throughout the whole United States, to keep public records for us. That's for us to see. We get to see that, you get to hold it, create it, hold it, and store it for us. We get to see it, and we get to see it so we know what you're doing, when you're doing it, how you're doing it, and what you did, okay? To deprive us from getting public records is embarrassing. It's absolutely embarrassing. This city does not belong to Lozano or any of you council members. It doesn't belong to you. It belongs to these people right out here. That's who owns the city. You're, you're elected and you're hired to run it for us, that's it. And I, I strongly suggest you get back on the side of the law and give us our public records when we request them. The only reason you don't is because you're hiding them, you're hiding something, and, uh, I'm the one that got Irwindale officials all indicted, they're all going to jail. You guys, I don't think you guys want me over here, 'cause I'll stay on you until I get every one of you indicted, whoever's, whoever's doing any wrong, wrongdoing. I'm real close to getting Lozano and Garcia right now, okay? It has something to do with the tow company. I'll, I'll let you know right now, 'cause I'm working on it hard. I want this council to start giving us our public records. Thank you.
All right, move along with public communication.
Hello, city council, I'm Mr. Luna. The way to bring a business to the city of Baldwin Park is, you go out, look for businesses, here a guy wants to bring his business to Baldwin Park, you ask him, what do you wanna give the city of Baldwin Park besides your business? Number one, you people should be looking at is revenue, but no. I'll give you the bank, and then we'll tax poor residents. They'll, they don't care, they'll pay whatever we ask. That's not the way to do business. The way to do business is, we'll bring you to Baldwin Park, we'll give you a cut in taxes, but, what, how much revenue are you gonna give me? If he says, "Well, I want it free," let him go somewhere else and get it free. Because I'll tell you one thing, he might go this way, either way, northeast, west, south, they're not gonna give it to him free forever. That's not the way to run business. You guys are like a business. We're the trustees back here. We don't trust you guys very much lately. You're giving the city away. Once you give it away, especially to Uncle Sam, he don't give it back. You guys should know that by now. Anybody that's a veteran knows that Uncle Sam wants his share first, and then you get what's left. But you guys are running business wrong. Bring business here for revenue. That means, in case we don't know, taxes. How many businesses have we brought in the last five years that give us big revenue? Mr. Pacheco probably could find out real quick for me, and let me know that maybe out of five or ten businesses that we got here give us a very small amount of revenue, but they're making millions and millions of dollars off of us, and we're still got them right here. We have Kaiser, we have Home Depot, we have Walmart, the hotel. How many more? How much revenue are we getting from them people? Okay, we get the bed tax from the hotel, we get little taxes from Walmart, we get little, we don't get no taxes from Kaiser at all. I'm a Kaiser member, and when they told us, "We're gonna pay taxes," and then all of a sudden they click, "We don't need to pay taxes." How many people in this city council really want revenue or just give the city away? We just finished a meeting a little while ago, it looked like you're giving the city away.
Mr. Luna, your time's up.
There goes my three minutes.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Luna, appreciate that. All right, move along with public communication.
Thomas Carey, former resident of Baldwin Park. Uh, I think, wanna talk about the homeless, and why there's so many mentally ill on the street. Blame Ronald Reagan for that, he closed all the mental hospitals. They would have a place to be taken care of now if he hadn't closed all the facilities thirty-five years ago. Um, but aside from that, I had a little run-in today with, um, I don't know if you've heard of it, Southwestern Auto Parts. Bought some parts over there, they put them on the car, and the car was shaking like it had a misfire. Took off the old mounts, or the new ones, put the old ones back on, no more problem. Though my advice is to stay away from there, at the very least, don't trust a place you've dealt with for more than twenty years and pay cash like I did. If I'd have paid with a credit card, I have to underline that, when it's a big purchase, pay with a credit card, not a debit card, a credit card. That way, if there's a problem and they decide they don't wanna back up what they're selling, or use some excuse to special order, or whatever the case is, the credit card, you report it to them, they pull the money out of their account, and they deal with it for you. I'm probably in for quite a fight with them. Uh, I didn't tell them I was going to speak at the meeting about them here tonight, but if you have older cars and things like that, find another place to go, but if you really must go there, then pay with a credit card. That way, you're covered. I knew that, but I thought after dealing with them for so long, they would stand behind their parts they always had before. And I'm not talking about fifty dollars, I'm talking about two hundred dollars. You know, that's, that's a lot of money, but it's gonna cost them a lot more by the time I get done. I'll be going on the computer and putting them on Yelp, I'm sure they'll like that. I'm learning about the internet slowly but surely, how to deal with entities that do certain types of things. Um, so I'm, I'm calm now, but I'm angry inside about what happened, 'cause they were arguing with me, saying that, "Oh, well, they never had any trouble before." Expect me to take more mounts, put them on the car, and engine dynamics has to take them on, and put them on, have it shake again. I told them, "Nothing doing, I says, "Not gonna happen." So, uh, you know, buy only, in this case Toyota parts, buy only motor mounts from Toyota. No aftermarket Chinese, well, I'd rather... No aftermarket Chinese, well, I'd rather use the word, but I won't, no Chinese junk as far as motor mounts and things like that go. I bought from Toyota like I did before, I wouldn't have this trouble today, and the forthcoming trouble. But the bottom line is, pay with a credit card, that way, not debit card, credit card, that way you're protected 100% if they don't want to stand behind their stuff.
Thomas, I'm sorry, you have three minutes.
I know, I just wanted to underline that about the credit card. No council roasting today. Okay, thank you.
Hi, Paul Cook speaking. Long time I haven't been around, looks like the city circus is still around with the Piggy Correo, the bankrupted tailor, we've got that sickie right there named Gravy, you know, I got your personnel file, and then we have an ape attorney, you know, but they're usually from Malaysia, but I don't know how we got a Mexican one. Today Manuel Lozano's been sued. You've been sued today for abuse of process and malicious prosecution. As an attorney of law, I've sued the City of Ballin Park twice and gone in and on the newspaper nearly 10 times for its corruption. As a result, Manuel Lozano, the mayor of Ballin Park, has retaliated against me as follows: Had me arrested, jailed me for three hours, filed a frivolous TRO against me. The arrest was for bullying while he was onstage and leafleting at the park while a city event concert at the park was being staged. For protesting him, five officers at Manuel Lozano's command grabbed me, placed me in an armbar, and threw me onto the streets. When I tried to re-enter the public park, the police arrested me. They jailed me for three hours, a woman police officer autonomy and strip-searched me. The LA County District Attorney didn't file charges against me. Four days later, after the arrest, Lozano filed a restraining order against me alleging I was a stalker and I was a violent individual. All of the alleged misconduct took place in a public forum of the city park and the city council chambers. In his restraining order, Lozano also took great offense that I called him a racist against Mexicans, which I believe to be true, and suggested he was a flagrant homosexual because he himself promotes bullying against gays, through Manny Correo, of course. Despite his denials, I have records to prove he's had a raging homosexual relationship with a young man. The court found insufficient evidence to grant the restraining order. This was even after the city attorney, Robert Tafoya, accused me to the court of being a perjurer. The court suggested that the city attorney was perjuring himself and Lozano. On August 28th, 2014, the court formally denied the restraining order because my activities were protected by the First Amendment. Although the court ordered Lozano to send me the deny order, he didn't. The official court order proved that Lozano filed a TRO with malice against me in order to chill my free speech. As a result, I have suffered great emotional distress. Lozano accusing me of stalking him, harassing him, and being a perjurer has harmed my business reputation as a professional attorney. Furthermore, I've lost over 40 hours of work time because of the incident. Lozano has therefore committed the torts of abuse of process and malicious prosecution and damages amount to over $10,000, because these are intentional torts outside of the scope of city business with no formal council authorization, and the remedy sought from a temporary restraining order followed Lozano personally. You are being sued personally. You need to show up. You cannot have an attorney in small claims court. Thank you very much. See the city circus again.
Alright, move along, anyone wishing to speak on their public communication? Good evening.
Hi, Counselors, my name is Linda Lee. I have a question that you can take care of for us about mosquito, because they bite us a lot. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. I'll have, can someone meet with her, please? Mr. Wall or who? Can meet up with her separately, please? Alright, thank you very much. Alright, thank you. Move along with public communication.
John Rios. Greetings. Susan, beautiful party last Thursday. I hope we have another one tomorrow. It was well put, Manny was well put, you know. There was a lot of citizens right there, a lot of them, you know. And we'll probably have more this coming Thursday, you know, because the word spread out, you know, that it was very nice, very calm, everything, the kids had fun, everybody had fun, you know. Mrs. Baca, beautiful, beautiful singing, you know, it was beautiful, everything was beautiful. Shannon, nice seeing you over there, you know. I miss Mr. Taylor over there, but yeah, it's okay. You were busy. But that's all I wanted to say today.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Good comment. Alright, thank you. Mr. Tuttle?
Good evening, Greg Tuttle, business owner. Just kind of stick up for the chief, his men were over there, so they took care of it, and they did a good job patrolling, and they had to stand there, and they got a lot of response out of all the residents there, lot of good rapport with the residents, we had a big turnout. And I want to thank Manny. I know I was hard on Maria at the first of the week, where's our posters, where's our advertising, where's our stuff? But when it all came together and we got our tents up and everything, it's like they just flowed in. And they did a very good job, the staff over there were excellent, and I think we're gonna have another big one with what Manny says, we're gonna have another 10 to 15 more vendors there. And Dan Wall with doing the streets and with the public works stuff, came out very nice, they kept the streets clean, everything worked good. And Craig, you're hiding over there, thanks for finding some money for us to help us out to get that thing going. And Susan, thank you very much, and Ricardo showed up with his little boy, I think he did more talking than Ricardo did for once. And Cruz is looking for a tip jar, which I'll supply, and she's gonna be doing songs at request at the next one. So I just, this is a good talk tonight, just so that everybody knows that, very appreciative of what went on at the street fair, and I think we ought to look into that this be a thing that we continue and maybe make it larger and go from Ballin Park Boulevard to Main on Ramona, use the Parks and Rec facility and stuff during the summer and do that and incorporate the concerts in the park with it. I think you can get a big turnout with it. And I think the chief can do some traffic control for us and get that handled, and so I'd like to see something like that done, but I think this is what we need to do to make Ballin Park grow, you need to help the businesses by bringing it to the citizens there and let the citizens come out and see what they have to offer. Okay, thank you.
Good job, thank you very much, appreciate that. Move along with public communication? If not, I will now close the public communication. Real quick, before I, I'm not gonna, I am not going to go into the comments of what this particular individual came up here to say, as I said over and over, the State of California, United Constitution allows anyone to come up here and just fabricate and outright make-up stories, and I as a mayor, or any of the council members up here, cannot legally serve that person in any capacity, and that's just the reality of it, and let just the process go through, but you know, it's the way it is. That's all I want to say. Alright, so at this point, at this point I want to... I want to go into the consent calendar, so we have items one through seven, and then before... Oh, okay, there's a typo on the resolution, by the way, item number six, that should read 2014-027, so that's a correction.
Mayor.
Yes.
I'm gonna go ahead and recuse myself once again from the consent calendar.
Okay, alright.
And for reasons that I stated last week.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Alright, so at this point, council members wishing to pull any item out?
Mayor, I just wanted to hold off on item seven, I didn't get the information that I was gonna request and...
Oh, okay, alrighty. We'll just do the next one. Alright, so, yes.
I don't want to pull four, I guess I should, I just want more information about the lifts.
On which one?
Number four.
Alright, number four, so we're gonna go ahead and pull number four. So at this point, I will now go ahead and move a motion to pass consent calendar with the exception of items four and seven. That's my motion.
I second.
Second, by Councilmember Cruz Baca. Any objections? See none, so move. Item four, which reads, "The Authorization Purchase of Vehicle Lift," so this council member, Susan Rubio.
Yeah, just really quickly, can you just give us a little bit more information? Are we replacing old ones? I mean, I kind of see in the report, but just give me information on what we're purchasing. Thank you.
So currently, we have an in-ground lift that lifts vehicles in the fleet maintenance garage at the city yard. That lift is out of service, can't lift large vehicles with it, so what we're doing is we're replacing that, we're having that lift removed, we're filling in the pit that it currently is in, and we're buying a replacement system that is six little portable things that can go under any of our vehicles in the city. So our largest vehicle would probably be the police's armored vehicle, it's the heaviest vehicle we have. These lifts would be able to be taken out into the field, they're wireless and portable, so they could maintain it wherever it happens to be. If something should happen to that vehicle, they'd be capable of lifting that vehicle up or any of the vehicles. These lifts are wireless and can be used on uneven ground. I don't know if you have any...
That was it, thank you. And so, just to be clear, we're purchasing this with the asset forfeiture fund, so it's not gonna impact the general fund, correct?
It's, no, no general fund money, part of it's coming from Fleet Services Equipment Replacement Fund, and part of it is coming out of asset forfeiture.
That's perfect, thank you so much.
Alrighty, thank you. So at this point, did you want to go ahead and...
I'll make a motion to pass it, yes, thank you.
I'll go ahead and second. Any objections? See none, so move. Alright, so we'll go over to item seven, which Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco, want to make a motion to bring it back? Is that what... Alright, so at this point, I'll go ahead and make a motion to bring item number seven back, so that is my motion, second?
I second.
Second?
Oh, he's second.
Second by Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco. Alright, thank you very much. Alright, so at this point, we don't have anything else? I'll go ahead and move for, I think that's the only thing we do have, that's right. I'll move for a German of the city council.
Mayor, before we conclude, I forgot, I really wanted to thank the Parks and Rec's performers, we had, I forgot to mention, we had a little group of little girls dancing out there, sorry Manny, can you tell me the name of the group? We had also a fitness group, a little girls, I think they were ballerinas, am I right? Can you remind me who these individuals were?
Yes, we had the Dancing Stars, I believe the name is, which is a recreation, recreational class conducted at the Arts and Recreation Center, as well as we had a Zumba class for adults performing, and I believe actually the Zumba class are the ones that appeared in the video.
Okay, can you please thank them for us?
And the ballet dancers, I'm sorry.
Yes, please thank them on behalf of the council for coming out that day, we really appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you.
Any further? If not, at this point, I'm gonna move for a German. A second, any objections? See none? Viva Ballin Park, good evening.
No. I'm fine, thanks.
Robert, vice in our role.
How are you doing? Hurry on, thank you.
So him suing the mayor, is that like legal? Oh my god.
So this is just saying that we checked and there are no, they've paid any assessments that they owe, so it's...
Oh, this is a big fan. This is a big one.
Or I'll just leave it here maybe, and then...
I'm going upstairs.
This, maybe for the next time we redistribute it. Should I take it, or should I give it to you? Okay, let me actually just take a picture of it.
So again, it's just saying it's special assessments.
It's big. Into them right. It's right over here.
And then this one, are we gonna do this one again at a later time? You're very welcome.
Have a good night. Get me out of there.
Probably repaint it next time. Okay. Yeah. Okay, great, thank you. Can we see each other, we'll be...
Did you...